Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, oh.
Well, I mean, do you think it might be? Is anyone else?
No, but as long as they know that there's a ready.
Yeah, people will be less.
Yeah. Fifty fifty.
We cannot suffer from failure of imagination.
No. Yeah, it's like seven.
Yeah.
I have five minutes, seven twenty. But they're not. And he's so, he's so well known in town.
Yay.
Because he didn't really endorse.
Then there were six.
There's no way. For what?
Yeah, you, you ran into the middle of it, didn't you?
I know, I did, I mustn't, I guess there's an email about it.
Yeah.
Just had a situation.
Yes.
Oh, you think? Just a little, maybe?
Everyone else is really nice.
Are these all enough?
Yes. I suspect they are.
Okay, hello.
We have six.
What's that?
We have six counts.
Yeah.
He's doing amazing stuff. You're a very detail-y guy.
So please, we have to. Did you get that?
Too detail-y.
Like, I got the.
Well, I tried to do it in a nice way, like.
So we're gonna.
And, you know, normally.
But, yeah, but this was.
It's an interesting threshold, I appreciate this death story threshold.
I want a chart.
It's in our chart.
Yes.
Okay.
I think it has the starches. What are we talking about?
He's still fixated on that potato.
I think it has the starches. They're really, they're. The potato.
But it's good.
Yeah, but it's uncooked, it's uncooked. We can't, we don't have mammals can't, or dogs can't break those down. Uncooked.
There you go. Put that in your scientific. Plunder. I do know why.
We enjoyed waiting to. I think. However, I wouldn't be telling you the truth. It's totally uncorrected.
I know, that you could see the divots, there's actually a piece of paper towel on the outside that you couldn't see.
Alex's face.
There was, uh, someone.
You know what?
In the paper towel.
Oh, nice. And it pooped a paper towel out. And they were like, is that?
Oh, sure.
The paper towel wasn't broken down.
There's little bits of it on the outside.
Are we sure it was paper towel?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Hey, you made it.
What's that?
You made it.
Yes. Got to get a little bit of the update on the situation.
According to this, Mike is very close.
Do you track him?
They haven't really been related.
He and I went to Europe. And we, no, but he and I went to Europe, and so we went to track each other.
Aww.
So we knew where each other was.
That's so cute.
I just haven't undone it, so.
Unless you track all of us, then less cute.
That's right.
That's tracking without.
And so, I don't know, it was a couple of years ago, one of us was at the ER, I think he was feeling well.
That's very convenient.
His sister in Seattle's like, what are you doing in the hospital?
Yeah, no, it's, it's gonna be a lot of info, it can be too much information sometimes.
Weird, he missed the button, caught up in traffic.
Well, the whole situation this side is.
So he had to drive all the way down. Did you walk by it?
I rode, I rode up this way and then I just zoomed around.
Picture you through the police cars, just.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just heard the door.
Oh, there is a door, yeah. Is it Mike? Yay, he's here.
It's a two-way street. So, Mike. So people, well, it's Mike's way, and I go, oh. I think, I've got, I can track. I never looked at that, so here. And I go, oh, he's, he's on Peach Street, he's probably right here. Everybody got a good laugh. All right. Call the meeting to order, please call the roll.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Pitherich?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Snively?
Here.
Okay, we will now do the pledge of allegiance, if you'd like to join us, you're invited to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and I would now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any additions or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda's approved and will move to public participation, and my first, part of that is to read this following proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska, parenthetically, I live there, they needed to plant them. And whereas trees can produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, and help to absorb rainwater, and slow the velocity of stormwater runoff. And whereas trees are a resource providing us with wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, paper, and countless other wood products. And whereas associated with the management of the some three thousand six hundred and forty street, park, and public trees in the community, the city of Oxford has fulfilled the National Arbor Day Foundation's requirements for Tree City USA for twenty-eight consecutive years. Now therefore, I, William B. Snively, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, Tree City USA, do hereby proclaim that on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, the last Friday of the month, the city of Oxford will recognize and participate in the national and international celebration of Arbor Day. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. So it's Arbor Day, coming up. One of my favorite holidays. And our next item is a presentation from TOPPS, the Talawanda Oxford pantry and. I, I did it, social services. This was written down on my, on my agenda with two Ps instead of two Ss, so I got thrown. So I apologize. Hi, Sherry.
Hello.
Welcome.
I'm Sherry Martin, Executive Director for TOPPS. Thank you for this opportunity to share an annual update of what's going on at TOPPS. I'm gonna try not to look at my paper the whole time, but I have a lot of numbers to share with you that I think are exciting, so. Um, in twenty twenty-four, we served, uh, one thousand four hundred and twenty-one households, that was between the pantry and the social services side. And as you can see, uh, most of those people we also fed, um, with the one thousand three hundred and ninety-seven households fed, um, three thousand four hundred and eighty-six people fed, and twenty-three hundred of those people were within the Oxford City limits. Um, we also delivered two thousand eight hundred and fifty food boxes, um, around the Talawanda School District, um, with about eighty percent of those being within the Talawanda School District. Um, so our, our housing stability impact, um, I wanted to share that we provided thirty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars in rent and utility assistance in twenty twenty-four. Um, we partnered with local churches, um, including Oxford Bible Fellowship, Saint Mary's, Oxford Presbyterian, and the Oxford United Methodist Church. Um, together, between TOPPS and those churches, we made an impact of over sixty-two thousand dollars, um, keeping people housed, preventing eviction, um, as you probably know, is far cheaper than, uh, rehousing or, um, then, uh, thanks to that support, a hundred and thirty-four households in the Talawanda School District avoided eviction or utility shut-off. Um, that's an average of four hundred and sixty-two dollars per household, opposed to the over fourteen hundred dollars per household that we spent on the cold shelter. So the cold shelter, as you know, um, you all helped fund the cold shelter along with the McCallahide Foundation, and we received funds from Kiwanis as well, and some individual donors. Um, over the coldest nights, we, we provided five hundred and thirty-nine nights' stay to forty-seven individuals, um, in twenty-nine different households. Um, ten of those households were housed stably, um, and we spent forty, over forty-one thousand dollars doing that. Of the nineteen households that were not housed, um, the biggest issue, I mean, there were several issues, um, including like lack of income of previous evictions, but the biggest issue being affordable housing. Um, five of those households were able to stay in Oxford, five of them moved outside of Oxford to find affordable housing. So we continue to learn hard lessons with the cold shelter. The program helps people survive the cold, um, but the long-term impact is limited. It's more of an urgent emergency thing. Uh, eight households were removed due to legal or conduct issues, and two hotels that partner with us will no longer partner with us, um, which we, we lose a couple every year. Um, our staff was stretched thin, but I wanna recognize Chase Walter, who went above and beyond coordinating transportation, um, hotel stays, documents, and connections to other services. He's one of our client favorites for a reason. And I wanna say a special thank you to our interns, uh, Simon and Katie, who are here in the audience. Um, they also helped manage the flood of incoming calls during the cold shelter, um, and they were, you know, essential to our operation. And then I just wanted to give a quick building update, we have applied for a building permit. Um, we're, we're ready to bid, we're having our pre-bid meeting at TOPPS tomorrow at two PM, um, where we're hoping that contractors will come out and chat with us about the bidding process. Um, this building will allow us to serve, you know, more effectively and sustainably, um, and keep our services under one roof, which will be a nice seamless experience for our clients. And then I just wanna say thank you to everyone here, um, we could not do what we do without the support from the City of Oxford Administration and Council, so we thank you very much for all of your help.
Thank you, Sherry, we really appreciate all of the hard work that you and your staff do.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have questions?
Yeah, so one, have you shared this with us yet, the PowerPoint? If not, could you send that to us?
Yes, yeah.
And then, is there anything we can do in terms of, um, like advertising for additional bidders, or anything else you want us to put out?
That is a good question, um, Scott Webb, our architect, has been handling all that, but I can ask him if there's other avenues, or, um, he did post something, I think, in the Journal News, um, but that's a good question, I'll get back to you about that.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mike, just one little, when I, I appreciate the thanks to us as a council, but it's taxpayer dollars, and I think the taxpayers of the City of Oxford are, must be really proud to be involved in the kind of we effort that's involved in TOPPS. I mean, it's such a collaborative effort of so many entities, and I'm grateful to be on council to just help a little bit, um, but it really, it's just such a people-centered effort, and it really is, it's a, really a testament to, I mean, it's amazing what you guys are doing, so thank you.
Yes, the community is very generous.
They are, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And this takes us to the rest of public comments, so anyone wishing to address council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, or if they're on the consent agenda, you can come forward at this time, come on up, Anne, and give us your name and where you live for the record, and we'll give you five minutes. Welcome, Anne.
Thank you, Anne Fuer, I live in Southern Knolls, um, on Dana Drive. Uh, I'm not sure whether TOPPS' presentation was on the agenda or not, but so that they can leave if they need to. I just wanna say that, um, congratulations, um, to the work that TOPPS, um, is doing. Um, I was, uh, Executive Director there for two and a half years during the pandemic, and most of my focus was on, uh, the pandemic and pivoting pretty constantly in order to meet people's needs. What we're seeing now is post-pandemic, and the need, um, that people have has increased dramatically, certainly not just because of the pandemic, but for a whole variety of reasons. And so to see the number of clients and families served, uh, double, triple, um, since I left is, um, so disheartening, not surprising, uh, and reflects, um, a significant portion of our community. I meet periodically with Amy Masechko, and, um, she said, you have to increase, um, the percentages you give of the, um, students in the school district who qualify for free and reduced lunches, because it's, it's going up. And, uh, so the need is definitely increasing, and, um, the, it is due, the ability to even begin to meet that need, and I know that, um, TOPPS could use a lot more resources, people and money-wise, but we all do give a lot, and I think the community really is, um, realizing. Sherry's done a tremendous job, um, in terms of social media and communicating with the community in ways that, um, encourage involvement, and that's been wonderful to see, uh, the building is coming to, uh, fruition, and, uh, that's gonna be a wonderful resource, and again, that's in large part due to the ARPA funds from the city and the county, and we, um, of course, do thank you for that. The news, um, in terms of federal resources for people, uh, who are living in poverty and the service providers is horrific, and so, um, not a lot of the money, um, that TOPPS, uh, uses come from, uh, federal funds, um, or state-level funds, but the impact on, uh, the clients and those of us, uh, who support TOPPS and other service providers locally um, is gonna be really devastating, so, um, they're gonna need to devote a lot of staff resources, um, to acquiring resources. So, um, there is a lot of hard work ahead, and, um, you have been a wonderful council and staff to support them, and part of what OSHA's doing is working to increase community awareness of the need for affordable housing, Sherry mentioned that, and that really is true. Um, there just aren't places that people can afford to live, and, um, the people who, um, are served need more than housing. They need housing first, but they also need mental health and addiction and, um, educational and job, uh, resources, so, um, the work that TOPPS does as, um, one of, a number, there are other social service agencies that work, um, directly with people living in poverty. So, um, I appreciate your, um, listening carefully and, um, sharing the awareness, uh, with others in the community about the important role we play. They're in a separate supply chain, there are multiple supply chains for food and housing and everything in our community, and TOPPS is at the center of, of the alternative one, so, um, again, uh, congratulations on great report and impact, thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Hi, um, my name is Sydney Smith, and this is my classmate, um, Sarah Fitzsimmons, we're both students at Miami University, um, currently in Oxford, I live, like, off of Spring Street, um. So, um, for a part of, we are working on a community engagement project for one of our classes, and one, um, when like talking to different community members, one issue that came up a lot was the amount of litter in Oxford, um, especially in the Uptown area. Um, so while we've noticed that there are significant and sufficient garbage bins along High Street, we also noticed that there is a lack of public recycling available, um, so we think that the implementation of recycling bins would be beneficial, since a significant portion of the waste in Uptown and, like, litter in Uptown is recyclable goods, such as like aluminum cans and plastic cups. Um, we actually ended up discussing this issue with a lot of fellow students and Oxford community members and did a bit of a survey, um, and there has been a lot of interest shown in implementing these public recycling bins, um, especially along High Street. Um, we proposed a couple locations in our survey, and a lot of people said that they would, um, prefer to have, like, recycling available, kind of by, like, Bagel and Deli and Skippers, like that very popular part of Uptown. So, yeah, basically, in conclusion, we think that implementing public recycling would have multiple benefits, um, especially when it comes to, like, litter mitigation and keeping Oxford clean and sustainable. And, yeah, we think that that should maybe be something that we could consider, um, so thank you so much for your time and consideration of our ideas.
Thank you very much, and thank you for sending it in writing as well, we all received it.
All right.
So thank you. Now, that's very important, and I want people to know that we do read, uh, what, what people send in to us. So we'll have staff look at that issue and, and report back to us, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Okay, thank you very much, everyone for coming. Okay. We'll now move then to the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, are there any items to be removed? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, the consent agenda is approved, we'll move to resolutions, you can read the first one.
A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Elums Escavating LLC for the replacement and upsizing of the High Street water main from College Avenue to Locust Street at a cost of two hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred, ninety-three dollars and fifty cents, with a contingency in the amount of twenty-two thousand, three hundred, seventy-nine dollars and thirty-five cents, for a total cost not to exceed two hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred, seventy-two dollars and eighty-five cents.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Mike?
Welcome.
Good evening, council. Uh, the city council has previously budgeted three hundred thousand dollars for this project. In the past, we've replaced the twelve-inch, uh, a new twelve-inch ductal iron line all the way from the water treatment plant, all the way up Seventy-three, down Patterson, all the way up High Street, underneath all of the, uh, restored bricks. So now we're going to, uh, continue that process. Uh, we designed these plans in-house and advertised for bids, we had four qualified bidders. Elums was the lowest bid. We've not worked with them in the past, but a check of their references shows they're qualified, and we're ready to proceed. So we intend to do this project this summer. It should be completed before the fall semester in Miami, and then we plan to follow this up next year with another project and connect to a, a new pipe that's already under the railroad and complete this phase of the project. As for your approval this evening.
Thank you very much, just a quick question for clarification, and then I'm gonna go to public comment. So this means that High Street will be torn up for a good portion of the summer, is that right? And will traffic be?
We will encourage the contractor to, to work quickly. I suspect the project will be done in about four weeks.
Okay.
So. There'd be a little bit of pain, but we'll encourage them to go quickly.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, councilors?
Just a practical question, is that, like, um, where does that portion of College Avenue, I mean, how, West High stand on our paving index? Are we likely to follow up with some paving sometime in the near future, 'cause this kinda work, is it underneath the road bed or underneath the sidewalk?
It's, it's underneath the road, it's on the north, it's on the north side of the road. I've not looked that far ahead, I, I don't, it's not going to be immediately paved, but the repair will be, uh, smooth.
Yeah.
I don't suspect.
I just, sometimes it's utility where it kinda necessitates at some point in the future that, you know, we bump it up on the paving schedule, that was just curiosity. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, all right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, resolution is adopted, please read the second one.
A resolution to declare the necessity and intent to acquire a perpetual easement over certain parcels of real estate owned by Laura C. Osborne trustee with interest by others to expand the Oxford area trail system by adding it, the roadway trail for Phase Five of this multimodal transportation project located in the city of Oxford, Ohio.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much, Michael?
So council has seen these two resolutions previously, as well as the two ordinances that will follow tonight. Uh, this is for a very important project, we have over three million dollars in grant funding that is going to help pay for this project. Upon a final review of our paperwork, the Law Department found a flaw in the original resolutions where the, um, exhibit did not show the actual legal description, but referenced another property document. Uh, so we're cleaning that up before we file our paperwork with the courts and ask your indulgence to approve these again tonight. Uh, there's no changes, no material changes in that, and we'll also need to have the ordinances approved as well tonight as an emergency.
Okay.
Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, is there anyone from the public who would like to address the resolution? Councilors have any questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right, that is adopted, and we'll move to the third resolution.
A resolution to declare the necessity and intent to acquire a perpetual easement over certain parcel of real estate owned by EVR Investments LLC with interest by others to expand the Oxford area trail system by adding the roadway trail for Phase Five in this multimodal transportation project located in the city of Oxford, Ohio.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, anything?
Same exclamation as, uh, as item B.
Okay, thank you, is there anyone from the public who wants to address this one? Hearing none, councilors have any questions or comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the resolution is adopted, and we'll move to ordinances, first reading.
An ordinance to appropriate certain real property interests owned by Laura C. Osborne trustee to expand the Oxford area trail system by adding the roadway trail for Phase Five of this multimodal transportation project located in the city of Oxford, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, anything to add, Mike?
Just a reminder, we'll need six votes and the affirmative to make this pass as an emergency.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this one? Okay, thank you. Again, uh, this does require six votes, it is the same thing that we voted on previously, but it's been cleaned up. Okay, are you ready to vote? Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pitherich?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. That ordinance is adopted, and we'll go to the second one.
An ordinance to appropriate certain real property interests owned by EVR Investments LLC to expand the Oxford area trail system by adding the roadway trail for Phase Five of this multimodal transportation project located in the city of Oxford, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance, I assume that this is the same.
Nothing additional, yes, sir.
Okay, anyone from the public wish to address it? Thank you, any councilors wish to address it? Thank you, please call the roll.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Pitherich?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. The ordinance is adopted, we have no. We have no second readings, so we will move to announcements and communication in pretty much record time, I'd say.
Yes. Well, first I want to thank you for passing the four pieces of legislation dealing with the trail. And so thank you for that. Quick update on the excise tax on marijuana. You know, I've been tracking it because as you know, we had, we have two adult-use marijuana dispensaries located within our corporate boundary, boundaries. And we expected to receive 36% of the 10% excise tax that the state collects. And as you probably know, with all the emails I've been sending you, I've been tracking it. And of course, there were two bills, a senate bill, Senate Bill 56, that originally changed the distribution, but was amended with no change to the distribution. It passed the senate, was sent to the house. The other bill was House Bill 160, and it reduced the allocation to host communities to only 20% and only for five years. And of course, the governor's budget bill basically eliminated any distribution to host communities. Well, it's being dealt with now in the budget process. The House adopted a budget appropriation bill, House Bill 96, and they kept their proposal in there, and that is to basically limit it to 20% and it would stop after five years. So instead of 36%, we can get 20%. And so it passed and it goes to the senate, and of course, the senate will deal with it. And if there's no concurrence, they have to assign it to, to a committee to resolve the differences. So I'm going to keep tracking it because, you know, you might note that there are 139 licensed dispensaries operating in the state. And basically, there are 24 municipalities with two or more dispensaries for a total of 85, including Oxford with two and Monroe with four. There are 54 municipalities with one dispensary, including Seven Mile. So Ohio currently has a total of 926 municipalities, 253 cities, 673 villages. So this means that with a total of 139 licensed dispensaries operating, only a fraction of municipalities permit such dispensaries. So I feel that the city of Oxford, we feel strongly that those host communities and only those host communities should share in the excise tax revenue initiated in the citizen-initiated statute adopted by the voters. So, you know, as you know, I sent an email to our representative and I'll be sending one to Senator, geez, I forget his name now, Lang. Thank you. And so, you know, I'll keep you posted on that. But I do hope that the governor and the Ohio legislature maintain their current citizen-initiated statute language at 36% with no limitation on the number of years. You know, we'll be able to use that funding to basically fund services like police, fire, EMS, and capital projects, so. And a couple of other things I wanted to share with you. We're better, staff is very busy, even though the agenda looked light. You know, we, we are dealing with a lot of projects. Of course, the Economic Development Strategic Plan, the Planning Plan, the Unified Development Plan is, is causing staff a lot of work too. But we met this week to deal with the snow ordinance, the snow removal ordinance, basically. And I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. We had a meeting and it involved Community Development, Service Finance, and the City Manager's Office. Community Development has developed a list, a G I S list of parcels on the snow routes in US 27 with the owners' names, their addresses, and the lineal feet of sidewalk. I think I shared with counsel when we were considering this ordinance, I felt there were like 200 parcels. Well, it turns out there's 913 parcels, and that doesn't include the city or Miami University parcels. So quite a few parcels, a lot of data. So thanks to Community Development, they've developed this list and will be sending a letter out to City Manager's Office to all the property owners in September informing them of the new policy. We'll post it on the city website and on our e-newsletter. We're going to divide the city into quadrants and identify existing staff members to conduct inspections after a three-inch snow event. So Service Department will be doing an RFP for snow contractors. And so there's a lot of work involved in this and we're gearing up for it. You know, who knows what next year will be like as far as snow events? You never know. The last thing, it was brought up when they talked about the recycling of bottles and cans. As you know, city council was current, concerned about code enforcement. So staff and I had a, a meeting on that as well. Our focus was on litter primarily. You know, if you walk many of our alleys, there, there's litter and we need to deal with that. So we developed some ideas for that. I think we all got the email of the two Miami students that talked to us tonight and we'll follow up on that and, and share with you some information. So a lot of ideas and a lot of work going on with staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. Heidi?
I just want to say kudos to all those that put on the B Festival, but great.
It was great.
Although I had a bridal shower in the morning, so I didn't get to go to the 10K, but it was very nice.
Okay, thank you. And anything from Parks and Recreation?
The egg hunts? Should I sit here?
Yeah.
Okay. We have the egg hunts coming up this week. On Thursday, we have the adult egg hunt at the community park at seven o'clock. And then we have the nighttime egg hunt at the Tri-Community Center that will be at 9:30. And then on Saturday, we have the daytime morning egg hunt for ages zero to third grade, and that starts at 11 sharp. And then you talked about Arbor Day, so the Memorial Day Petri Ceremony will be on Friday, April 25th, and we will be honoring Sharon Edwards, the naples educator, and Crew Dana, former mayor and counselor.
Thank you very much. Sam?
I just wanted to give a quick shout out for Becky Cole, who recently retired. She's been with the city for almost 24 years. So just wanted to thank the city staff, put together a, kind of a retirement breakfast for her on Friday. And she was, she'll be sorely missed and was a cheerful coworker and positive force to have in our department handling many of the administrative duties for our office. So I just wanted to thank her for almost 24 years of service.
Absolutely. Thank you. Congratulations to her. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Chris?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay, Mike?
I just want to say we're going to have a Drug Takeback Day on Saturday, April 26th, from 10 to 2, and the locations will be the Tri-Community Center and the Walmart parking lot. And I'm just going to pile on it, what a great time I had at the B Festival. I mean, for a first-time festival, it really went off great, so. Great job to everybody.
And did you get to sell any of your honey?
I did not, because we don't have any honey right now. That's a long story, but.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Yours is very good. Alex?
Uh, yeah, I will echo that sentiment of it was, I, I don't think that there are enough words to really capture how perfect Saturday was. And it was real, the weather was perfect. I think the confluence of having parents there. The number of parents who were like pleasantly baffled walking between sorority and fraternity events and finding this like really amazing vibrant thing happening uptown was incredible. The bands were great, the food was good, the vendors were incredible, Shade Makers knocked it out of the park with the entryway to the alley. There's just like so many people to thank. I know Jessica's not here, Jessica played a great role, Casey obviously is not here. I'm just hanging out and eating, which is fine. A huge thank you to Casey, who did so much planning, Seth, who did so much planning. Yeah, and Deanna, who, Deanna and I rode the entire length of the 5K, 10K course in 30-ish degree weather, putting signs out. So thank you to Deanna, thank you to the Streets crew. It ju, and that's just thinking about the 5K, 10K. I'm so happy that Oxford shines when we do these events because the number of hours of work and passion and the littlest details that make such a huge difference. Getting the Kicking It With Ken crew there on Friday to promote, it was all, I'm just like incredible and so much work. And Rena, oh my gosh, Rena was there. She started the race with me. So she showed up to the race at 8:00 AM and I saw her at the festival all day, working to make sure that we had not one but two zero-waste events in town. So yeah, I think immense, immense thank you to everybody involved with that planning. And we, for those curious, we ended with 177 registrations for the 5K, 10K and about 160 and some change actually showed up. And we had really great running weather, maybe a little bit cold to be standing outside in the shade, but otherwise, great. So thank you, everybody, seriously.
Thank you, Alex.
Uh, some cat news. So is anyone following? Is anyone following what's happening in Middletown with the city council and the community cats out there?
Smith Park.
Just me? Okay, great, yes. Yeah, so there, they had voted on removing all the cats from a particular park, and as you can imagine, people are really angry when it comes to cats. And so they came out in fours and trying to allow these cats to stay in their home. And it just really, I was like, oh man, there's so many other ways they could have responded to that with like trap, neuter, release and like working with the people who are already on the ground doing this. And it made me think about the, if you're, if you love birds and reptiles and amphibians, taking away the food, a food source for the commu, the feral cats, stray cats, is probably going to kill more birds and reptiles and amphibians. What we need to work on is registration of any outdoor cat and then spaying and neutering if they go outside. That is a very good first step and something that I think everyone can agree on. Maybe not irresponsible cat owners, but no one really cares what they think. So I think that as this becomes a bigger issue, this will be something that hopefully we do not respond in the way Middletown did. And we respond in a more evidence-based manner that is more responsible to biodiversity and the cats and the people who love these cats and. And just so as a reminder, we do have a, a lot of TNR efforts, one of them being provided by Ohio Alley Cat Resource. That is a nonprofit in Cincinnati that comes to pick up cats from Oxford in a parking lot at 5131 Morning Sun on the first Friday of every month. And it's super cheap. You get, you can spay and neuter your cat for $50, or if it's a feral cat, it's completely free. So take advantage of that resource. It's Ohio Alley Cat Resource. You just go on their website, fill it out, and then you can be added to the list. They'll take to Cincinnati and then come back and bring your cat to you.
Very good. Thank you. Amber?
Of all the weekends for me to be traveling, it was last weekend. I'm so sorry I missed it. That's all for me.
Jason?
As has been typical since the new administration has come in at the federal level, I am gravely concerned about the rights violations going on and the anti-constitutional actions. And stay strong, keep fighting, because it's going to take even more effort from the public and citizens and politicians alike to, to fix this.
Thank you, Jason.
Alright, I mean, everyone has echoed, the, the B Festival was just really magical. All the things came together. And that was kind of cool to see how the like, how this thing has been building from different places. I mean, we've been talking about B as a kind of a, of a branding theme and then Joe Pressure's mural and, and, and the event, and then Shade Makers playing off the thing. And so it's how one creative thing inspires another creative thing. And I was just blown away by the festival because I think the city boxer may have hit on something that's really like a great, I mean, we were looking for a substitute for the eclipse, but it, it could be something we can really run with. I felt really excited about the potent, the long-term potential of the event. So I was, it was, it was just really a thrilling event. Of course, the weather helped. Sometimes the weather doesn't collaborate, like Oktoberfest, you know, 2024 was a little rough, but like, you know, so again, thanks to all the hard, hard workers who, who make an event like that happen. Just a little bit of an update, more from my professor hat. And if you're curious about the alley, there are a number of different student projects going on right now to evaluate certain policy things, one about the deer management. So my own planning students have been working with, you know, Jessica and, and Rena and business owners to try to research best practices on alleys in terms of beautification and place making. And so there will, they'll be doing some draft, presentation of draft proposals, I guess next week. And so I'll put that out there. It's, you know, so the public's welcome to come and check out what, some of the ideas from other cities and, and to see what we might be able to do with the alleys. I wanted to just put a shout out to our OPD and all their partners in the situation right now and wish them the best of luck. The last thing I want to say is I was thinking more about our meeting last time in the EV chargers in Lot 52, and I was kind of like, something was like rallying around in my brain, and I recalled that we had adopted as a priority for 2025 that staff would present to city council options for the Uptown surface lot and the, and the courthouse and associate cost estimate. So we had kind of discussed that we wanted to explore what the potential was of those, those sites. And so while, I mean, nobody's more excited about EV charging than I am, I just want to make sure that, like, I, I felt like a decision, a decision about that infrastructure was basically making a decision about the long-term use of, of a pretty important piece of property. And I was thinking a little bit about that is that I appreciate staff's desire to, to solve the problem, but also thinking about our goal. And also, I feel like the long-term disposition of a piece of property is something that as counsel I think would weigh in on. So I guess what I'm just wondering is whether, you know, I'm brewing in my head, resolution basically just to say to explore options for the location of, of the chargers adjacent to or outside the immediacy of Lot 52, if it's infeasible. But I feel like again, it's, if we're locking ourselves into the long-term future of, of that as a parking lot, I feel like it should be a council decision. And so, but, so, you know, I, I, so I'm thinking about resolution, but if I'm the only one who thinks we should have a conversation about it, then I'll let it go and we'll put the charges in Lot 52. But if there were a second, you know, thought, someone thought that was a valuable conversation to have, then I'm happy to develop the resolution. If everyone votes that it should stay a parking lot, then it's fine. It's a council decision. But it's not kind of a, kind of we easing into a long-term decision through a short-term decision, so.
Thank you, Dave. If anybody wishes to do so, please contact David for, for that. First, I want to wish Jason happy birthday.
Oh, yes.
Happy birthday!
The old man. Alright. I want to also thank everyone involved with the B Festival. I had my granddaughters, Kay and I brought them up, and it was, I mean, it was just fabulous. And they had a ball. And they were, there was a bounce house, there was the slide, there was face painting, there was all kinds of stuff going on, and they just had a blast. And we had a really good time. And I ran into a lot of people, I talk to people a lot, and I ran into this wonderful couple and we were chatting and I asked where they lived and they said, oh, we live in Indiana. We always come to Oxford for things like this. They're just so special. And I said, well, thank you for coming down. But that's why we do it, and, and draw people in and have them think that Oxford is a great place to visit. And I think the, you know, the Level Three chargers are going to do the same thing. They're going to be on people's apps so that when they plan their trip, they'll say, hey, let's stop in Oxford and have lunch or dinner, or let's go shopping while the car is charging. And I, I just think that's really good for our community. Also coming up is Pancake Day. Don't forget it. I won't be seeing you before that happens, but it is coming up. And if you need tickets, please contact any member of Kiwanis. And you can also buy them on the day of the event at the Talawanda High School. That is all the comments I have for tonight. I, by the way, I want to say that I agree with Jason. And when I turn on the television now, I used, I grew up being a news junkie. My parents instilled that in me, to be concerned with the world and to keep up with what's going on. And I do so now with such great trepidation because every time I turn it on, there's another right taken away. The veterans are not being supported anymore. The social security that I have put into and you all have been putting into is now under direct attack. They are deporting people and now the president is saying that he doesn't mind deporting US citizens despite the constitution. And he rounds people up and takes. And he rounds people up and takes them to another country without any due process, despite the Fifth Amendment to the U S Constitution. All right, I'll let it go, but I'm very concerned about it. Um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.